Okay, so 1.4 Chairman's additions and deletions. There is one deletion to the agenda in the Executive Session at the end. I don't believe it has anything that I don't know. So we're up to work session. Town Administrator updates and reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We went over the, what was then draft warrant at your last meeting, and we'd be looking to finalize it this evening for posting. And there are a couple of things that have been changed. I've had a chance to speak to each of you about at one level of detail or another. Article 5 of the annual, which is the budget, the number has gone down just a little bit. It's now nineteen million, seven ninety-five, five twenty-one and sixteen cents. And that is reflected not only in this budget article, but in the revised budget document. So stepping away from the warrant for just a second to tell you what those changes are, I can tell you that I erred in not accounting for a request from the town clerk to increase some of the line items in her budget for the Elections Division, specifically to account for the need for a police officer at the Presidential and for additional staffing for that as well. So that increase does appear in here now, and that's roughly twenty-five hundred dollars. Additionally, I received the writing from the Planning Board asking that consideration be given to increasing the planning admin position back to twenty-five hours, which is what they had had historically. And you'll see that that is also included in this most recent revision. And lastly, you will see, that's actually a note I wanted to talk about. And the last is not a change, but just something that brings to your attention. The Communication Center wages, there's a notation for two full-time dispatchers. And I just want to make clear for the record that the funding of those two full-time dispatch positions, if it is to occur, if it gets approved by you, approved by the FinCom, and ultimately approved by the Town Meeting, doesn't mean that those two positions get filled. That is an executive decision through the collective bargaining process, if they're to be filled at all, or if they're to be filled for an interim period while it's done as a trial. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record before going any further this evening. And one of the reasons the budget changed as much as it did, and Article 6, the very next article changed, increasing now to one-hundred-and-nine thousand, is as a result of the Land Use Department budget that I talked about last week with you. That was a position that the, position was made full-time, and there was a consideration for reclassification for the position. And it was brought to my attention that, given the fact that that is a union position now, that could not be included in the budget, so consistent with what's been done with all of the other issues, that additional hours and additional consideration for potential reclass has been pulled from the budget and put into the bucket, as it were, in the very next article. So you'll see the budget having gone down and the bucket having gone up. The only change you will see in the warrant from your last meeting beyond that is Article 20, which was for the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grants for Emergency Generators. Now, there's some discussion, remember, a week ago about whether the article has written, contemplated just the mobile generator or both generators. And I went back into the file and found an email from MEMA with some of the details. So the article now reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, sum of seventy-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars for the purpose of providing for MEMA Hazard Mitigation Planning Grants for Emergency Generators, which shall be reimbursed by seventy-five percent." So the way the grant works, according to this document from MEMA, you appropriate the full amount for the generators in advance, and then upon completion, you get reimbursed the seventy-five percent. So even though this looks like you're spending seventy-eight grand, you're really spending twenty-five percent of that. And I don't believe you'll see another change, other than the fact that the articles under the bylaws and acceptances have been added. They were only referenced in the last document, but now they're in there. So you see the full text of the proposed outdoor watering bylaw, the full text of the consideration of adding the watering bylaw to the non-criminal disposition, and the layouts for both Alyssa Drive and Trophy Ave. And lastly, the full text of the zoning bylaw as proposed by petition and by your Board of Board of Selectmen.
We have a hearing on that bylaw, right? The outdoor watering, is it next week?
I believe so, yes.
Next Tuesday?
With that, Madam Chair, if there are no questions about the agenda, it would be appropriate to have a motion to accept the agenda as presented this evening to distribute to the Constable for posting.
Do we have to take an official vote on the water capital?
You're not saying that you support and don't support?
No, but to add it, I know we didn't do that last week.
That's a good point. I'll go back and touch on those briefly, thank you. If you go to, it will be page eight, you'll see Article, sort of with Article 15. The Witchesburg Pump Station Number One, replacing and upgrading. That's a forty thousand dollar, and that would be out of Water Enterprise retained earnings. Article 16, three hundred thousand dollars for constructing and developing a replacement well at Cross Street to address high iron and manganese. My understanding on that one, having talked to Mr. Ray Fuses, that they would seek to put another well and develop another well, but still be able to use the existing treatment infrastructure that's in place. Next, Article 17, four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of rehabilitation and maintenance of the Fitchburg Road Storage Tank. There are several potentials, potential concerns for contamination that exists with the hatch on top. There'd be some work required to be done on the ladder, as well as venting that is required for the tank to keep it safe and clean. And Article 18, forty-five thousand dollars for some additional repair and maintenance on Highland Street Storage Tank. And one of the things particularly on that project is to put in an automatic mixer. Right now, they have a mixer that works only when the tank is filling. This would be something that would be more consistent. And for those that don't follow why you want a mixer in those big tanks is the water's pumped in from the bottom, so generally you get water coming in. It pushes the water level higher, and then when water is drawn, that first pull-out is the most recent water in. So you could have, actually have water sitting on the top half of that tank that never, ever makes it out of the tank. This keeps it stirred and mixed for all the reasons that you'd imagine that would be a good idea, to keep it oxygenated, to stop any microbial film being developed on top.
Yeah, we did, I think they put a mixer in the Fitchburg Road a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's the one I think we're talking about, that they did, just the one that only mixes on.
What article you went?
I'm sorry?
What article?
That's 18.
So just like we did for the fire equipment, I'll entertain a motion to...
My Article 18 says flags.
Flags are gone.
Yep.
And this would have been the one that would have been emailed?
I'm looking at the email.
As a part of the packet.
Yeah, I've got one. I'll look at it. Yeah, those are the ones gonna be posted.
Thank you for that.
We agreed everything that's on there. I think the only thing that we hadn't gone over was the specifics on the water. And he was gonna add that in, and we just gotta take an official vote in accordance with the Capitol bylaw to add it as an emergency.
Oh, definitely.
Because the Capitol plan will be done in the fall, so...
What article was that we're talking about?
The Articles fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
In the annual.
Excuse me, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah, and the special. Anybody in the audience have questions on them, while they're looking at them?
I'm assuming Capitol Planning did review it and recommended us to add it, correct?
That I don't know. I know that they have had a meeting, but what we were looking to do is, because they weren't gonna have had their plan, at least have the fallback position of declaring them an emergency. What I made clear to Mr. Ray Fuses when talking is that any document that ultimately comes out posting these as part of the official warrant doesn't designate that this is support by the Board or support by...
Oh, sure.
Anybody, it's just they have a right, this commission is to submit it if there is a vote of the emergency.
Absolutely, yeah, we can ask questions at Town Meeting, it's on, if anybody has any.
Good, make a motion? Make a motion that we accept the Town Meeting warrant?
Well, to add the Article fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
And to add Article fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
As emergency expenditures in accordance with the Capitol bylaw.
As emergency expenditures in accordance with the Capitol bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody have any questions on the warrant at all? I know we've been over three hours last week, but, no? How about my board?
No questions.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
So with that, I'd entertain a motion to accept and sign and post the special and annual Town Meeting warrant for May second?
Third.
Make a motion to accept, sign, and submit?
Post.
Post the annual Town Meeting and the special for May third, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Hartley, if you don't mind, we'll probably take a three-minute recess because we have to sign both of these so our Constable can post them.
Okay.
So I'd entertain a motion for a recess.
Madam Chairman, just before we do that, could I just say one quick thing here?
Sure.
Because it's a little out of the ordinary, but this year's budget cycle and a lot of other stuff call for extraordinary amount of work from certain people. And I just would think I'd be amiss if we didn't mention that this warrant's coming together. And thanks to the Board, Mr. Kryler, the Finance Committee, and all the department heads working together. So it's a tribute to everyone under not normal circumstances to work together. So I just want to let everyone know that through hard work, this happens. So to everyone out there, I just think it's important to let them know that hopefully this year, next year, it won't be like this, and that, but their hard work is appreciated by everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, Jim's really...
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Cindy, I'm sorry.
So if you guys want to start signing these, I want to remind you, you gotta sign the special.
Are we gonna go into recess?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why should that be recessed?
For five minutes?
Yes.
Just for signatures.
For signatures.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, welcome back. I'd like to call the meeting back to order at six-twenty-eight. So let's continue on. Took care of the warrant.
If I may, before you leave the warrant, just pass those down if I could. This is a document that I've used in the past, and I just, I'd mentioned at the last meeting that I'd get you a copy of what it might look like. This would be something that, in my experience, I had seen on the very first page of the warrant inside the cover. So for those that wanted to just use this sheet and not delve into the actual revisions I have the warrant, they could do so. It also would serve as a quick guide to, again, you'll see each article from the STM and the ATM down the left-hand column, the item description, the amount sought, funding sought, so if it's free cash, or raise and appropriate, or ambulance receipts, prop-two-and-a-half impact if any, so if there was an override, how many cents per thousand on the tax rate that article would represent if it passed. And then a column for Board votes and FinCom vote. So just think about it between now and when we start making copies to have for the public the night of the meeting, if you'd like something like this to be included.
Yeah, I think the more information available in the Town Meeting packet is very beneficial. I know the Finance Committee, a couple of years ago, they used to write their written recommendations, and now they just do yes or no. So this works out well, because you'll see both in one sheet.
We actually talked about that in our Budget Subcommittee meeting today. Cindy and Dawn and I talked about also working to have kind of a brief explanation bullet in the packet as well. So if, you know, somebody might be inclined to support something if they have a little bit more information in advance. You know, you get a lot of folks that won't necessarily stand on the floor of Town Meeting to ask their question, so they might not vote for something that they might otherwise want to. Or even more problematic, you have people that if they don't understand on the floor, they may stand up and you end up going fifteen minutes down the road you wouldn't need to go down if they had the information in advance, so...
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you.
So we'll have that as a part of the Town Meeting packet as well, the brief. And I don't care who, you know, if it's a select board document, a FinCom document, a joint document, but we can talk about that on Thursday night.
That's great. You know, what I find was so helpful with the written recommendations is doing research for historical reasons, or why did they vote that? And the reasons right there is, and it helps people at Town Meeting as well. I would definitely support that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
For you, and I believe for you, to Mr. Kryler, I'm just wondering where it says Board Selectmen Vote and FinCom. In those spots here, will it say recommended or not recommended?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to. I like this very much, a lot of work going into it, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And then you're thinking about just maybe adding another column with any comments?
Probably, no, there'd be a separate document.
A separate document?
That people could follow along if they want. If they want just the ten-thousand-foot view, kind of the cheat sheet, here it is. If they want something more in-depth, then they can have that very next document in the packet that would be article by article with a brief explanation. If they want to then just work off the warrant, they can work off the warrant. And people, I mean, you know the drill, people function and think and hear, read differently.
Oh, yeah. So they'll get information in all different formats. Yep. Okay, was there, I know, so folks know, we're gonna be meeting with the Finance Committee this Thursday to review the budget and also maybe take some of these votes that we were just talking about on this cheat sheet here. Is there anything else, Jim?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Board of Selectmen's announcements, updates, and reports.
Cindy, also?
Also.
The only things I have this week are, I had the pleasure, the Board asked me to go represent the Eagle Scout, and it was Troop Ten. And as usual, it was well-done, just to see the community involvement into building people a character and also giving back for their... Every Eagle Scout has to do a very large project for the community. And so I guess I'm the...
They love you, I heard from...
I love them, you know, I'm telling you.
Mr. Woody, he said you did a great job.
Well, but they're just easy people, you know, they're doing the right thing, you know? And so anyway, thank you for their honor there. And then I think Mr. Kryler's going to address from Cushing Academy?
Yes.
Okay, so I won't, but I happened to stop over what he's talking about, and I know he doesn't like to say it, but I have to say that I was impressed that people who are department heads are going out more to the community. And that day was, our Day-Day Operations was actually over there, and, you know, when making our Town... So I'll leave that to him.
Our Town Administrator was shoveling mulch, and we greatly appreciate it.
Yes, but here's the deal, is that I think it's, as much as work we have here is that when we get out in the community, people get to know what we're about and build a culture.
I heard it was a real successful...
Yeah, so I'm gonna leave that to him, I don't want to take that away. But I thought it was important to recognize that, I think there's a new culture here about department heads getting more out into the community. And so then, there's not this mystique about what really goes on, that they actually get to meet the people in person, and they understand that for the large majority of the thing, they're just wonderful people. All right, so that's all I have, I don't want to...
Madam Chair, to that point, every year, the students at Cushing Academy have a Community Service Day in memory of one of their trustees that passed away. And my understanding is that there's a family in the community that had a tie to Cushing as a member of the Board of Directors and is no longer one of the Board of Directors members. So while that had been coordinated through that local family in prior years, Mark Mercurio, your Facilities Coordinator, stepped up and coordinated everything for this year's effort. And we had probably about twenty-five students in and three instructors, and they came, you know, ready to work and did in fact work. So if you see any of the landscaping work around the police station or the library, senior center, and meeting hall, that's these kids that did that. So, you know, it's a great thing that Cushing does that, reaches out into the community. You know, kudos to Mark for stepping up and taking this thing by the horns and getting it done. Truth be told, I was there for the pizza. You know, it was really, really good to see the kids actually work really hard and then get to sit back and enjoy themselves. I've never seen four dozen donuts disappear so quickly, but it was a lot of fun. Next year, Mark has a hope that it can be developed a little bit more broadly, and members of the Boards might be able to, you know, step by and put an hour or so in. And additionally, perhaps we do a community service, you know, function. As a town where, when Cushing comes in, you know, whoever in any given year is in a leadership position, it doesn't just rest on someone like Mark, but, you know, from above, you know, the word goes out that we could even perhaps close the, you know, close the building for an hour, and people can just do their little piece. You know, you had Roger Repose's guys over there the day before prepping things. They were over doing some work after the kids left. So it makes it easier on them with everything they've got to do, obviously easier on Mark. But again, it's just a great opportunity to get out and have the public see, you know, that you're not just, as employees, just sitting here taking a check, you're actually giving a little bit back, so it was a good day.
I'd love to organize something like that, that'd be great. So the only, I just had a few small things. As most folks know, you know, we kind of lost one of Townsend's fathers. Mr. McNabb passed away, and we just, the Board wants to offer the condolences to the McNabb family. I also got a card if the Board could sign it. And in saying that, as most folks know, Earth Day is this Saturday. Mr. McNabb's funeral is also the same day, so there's gonna be difficulties with parking. So the more people that we can encourage to park at Town Hall, and maybe the back parking lot that are working at Earth Day, the better. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up just briefly is I was hoping, now that we've got through the budget, we weren't sure with the deficits, if we were gonna have to reappropriate some money. Maybe we can discuss right after Town Meeting, getting the design work done for the sidewalks that has been kicking around. Because I'd really love to see that section by Sterlite done in my lifetime, anyway. It's pretty dangerous over there. And that was, and that was all that I had. Let's see here. Meeting minutes, I don't believe we're all set on that. I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the Bill's Payable warrant only, no payable this week. Make a motion to sign the Bill's Payable warrant out of session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So under Appointments and Hearings, we have 3.1, vote to reappoint Joseph Missola as a Veteran Service Officer for a term effective April 1st, 2016, to March 31st, 2017. Motion to reappoint Joe Missola as a Veteran Service Agent for a term of, from April 1st, 2016, to March 31st, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're down to Meeting Business, 4.1, review and approve Town Clerk Kathy Spofford's request to the discontinuation of the current voting tabulators and approve to approve the use of the new tabulators. So our Town Clerk Kathy Spofford has joined us. Just for disclosure purposes, I'm the Assistant Town Clerk, so I'm gonna leave my two colleagues in charge of this discussion, not that there's a conflict, but for appearance purposes, so...
Okay, so I...
You're up.
Madam Clerk, welcome. And could you talk to us about what you'd like to come up with for the Board about tonight?
We are in need of three new voting tabulators. And according to the state, once we get our quotes, we go with the lowest quote, and, which is sixteen, five-seventeen, the three of them. But what I need from you is a motion to discontinue our AccuVote voting tabulators and to authorize use of the new equipment, which is, I have it written down here, the DS-200 precinct scanner and tabulator to begin with the September 8th, 2016 state primary election, and from that date forward.
I'm just gonna ask you if you'd give that to Cindy.
Thank you, oh, she even has it.
Cindy, do you have any questions?
And then I believe I just go and tell the company that we have decided to go with them.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm trying to play her.
Okay.
I won't do a good job, but I'm trying.
Since Kathy gave me the motion and everything, I'm gonna just read the motion.
But I didn't know if you had any questions about the product.
No, no questions.
Very specific wording.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can I just ask her one question?
Sure.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Just for my curiosity, because I always listen to bids and that kind of thing here. You said you went with the lowest bidder?
Yes.
But we don't necessarily have to go, we have to, we could also go, I'm not saying to do that, but we could, if there was, if we justified that we could go with a higher one, but we would just have to spell out why we went with that? But in this case, you're happy with it?
Yeah, there's really no reason to go...
That's all I want to ask.
With a higher one?
Right, so you're very happy with the lowest bid, you think's the best product for our town at this time?
I think they're very equal.
Okay, that's fine.
I think the state kind of gives us, or the state or federal, because we're talking federal elections as well, that tells us what we're gonna have. They tell us what we're gonna have.
Well, they give us two options.
Okay.
So, but it has to be state-approved. And they both are.
Okay, so you're happy with the...
So, yeah, right now, we have an automark voting machine for the blind that can come in and use it. And that is with the company that we're going with. Our current voting tabulators is with another company, but both companies are very good, so...
I didn't mean to stretch it out. I just wanted to make sure you were happy with who you picked.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, you are, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good relationship with them.
Thank you. If there's no further, Mr. Kryler, you're all set?
I am.
Thank you, sir. If there's no further questions at this time, I would ask the Clerk to, we would entertain a motion at this time.
Okay. Make a motion to discontinue use of the AccuVote tabulation voting equipment and to authorize the Town Clerk to use the DS-200 precinct scanner and tabulator voting equipment beginning with the September 8th, 2016 state primary election from that date forward.
Second, motion to be made and moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Jody, if you could just put that, it was 2-0 with Carolyn McCusman.
Yeah. And then I need something stating that this was voted on, so I can send it to the state.
A minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine. Because the state requires it in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming for us, we appreciate it. Madam Chairman, I would gladly like to turn the chairmanship back over to you at this point.
Go on, you do, it's your turn.
Thank you.
All right, folks, so 4.2, proclaim April Townsend Lions Club Appreciation Month. I'm not sure if there's a proclamation for such, there is? There is, okay, we just... We just proclamation? Whereas nineteen, in 1966, fifteen men from the town of Townsend decided a local service organization was needed. And whereas, these men joined Lions Club International, the largest service organization in the world, consisting of 1.4 million members in 206 countries. And whereas, in 1995, the Lions Club International voted to combine both the men's and women's clubs. And whereas, since its establishment, the Townsend Lions Club has donated seventy-five thousand in scholarships to Townsend College-bound students. And whereas, the Townsend Lions Club has donated ten thousand to support the local food bank. And whereas, the Townsend Lions Club has donated seventy pair of glasses to Townsend children who could not afford them. And whereas, the Townsend Lions Club celebrated its 50th anniversary on April 5th, 2016. Now therefore, we, Carolyn Smart, Gordon Clark, and Cindy King, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Townsend, Middlesex County, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be Townsend Lions Club Appreciation Month, dated this 19th day of April in the year 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So sign that, forward it to the Lions Club. That's great. Thank you, Jody, very much for preparing that. And we'll find it after. Okay, great. 4.3, review and approve the North Middlesex Regional High School choir booster president, Terry Frichetti, am I close, do you think?
Frichette.
Frichette. Request to hold a 5K color run and approve, to hold a 5K color run on June 11th, 2016. So I'm just looking this over, it doesn't appear that we need to, they're asking us to close a street, is that right?
Nope, they're not.
So, and Chief Barrio has no issues with it, but they are gonna assign a police officer?
Correct.
Down Proctor Road? So I guess I'll, the run would be a 5K run that we'd like to start at the high school track. We would run around the track for a lap, head out back to the back parking lot, take a left onto Proctor, then to Todd to a midway point. We would then have someone... We would then have someone stationed there to turn people around and head back down Todd and Proctor. The race would end in the back parking lot of the high school. So I have no issues with the funding used for the booster club. I think it's a great idea. I don't know if anybody had any comments.
I actually have some questions and concerns. My first question is, do we have a policy about this type of thing? With nonprofits assigning officers to them or not?
No.
Okay.
It's just kind of been standard, like with the Greg Reeves Run, we'll close the road and they...
Correct.
They put a detail...
So the only thing I would recommend, and it's not to, before I say another word, it's not that I'm not in favor of this, it's just that I know, we've talked about this and that Mr. Crowley's working very hard on updating policy procedures, some that haven't been updated since 2002. So the only thing I would ask in this motion for this, if we approve this, that, two things. One, that this isn't setting, that this will be the thing that we're going to review it. So that we're just doing this on its merit alone, on this one time here, so to be fair to everyone else. Because, you know, another nonprofit come, and I'm not against that, but we just need to get policy procedures. So now, yeah, I don't want to hold up this run. So I would just ask that this has not become a past practice until we have a chance to have more thorough discussion.
We've had a few things like this, like I remember we had a block party on Bow Street and they signed a, this was years ago. But you know, Gordon, I think we'd want to check with the police. They might have a standard policy. And we could just set it as a...
I'm thinking that maybe we can...
A selectman's policy.
Table that conversation to a future meeting. But not, not, just have this as a completely separate motion.
But the minutes will reflect.
But that we'll have a conversation at a future meeting, maybe after town meeting.
We're saying the exact same thing.
To discuss these policies, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what he's saying.
That's a good idea, because these could increase over time.
Well, the other thing is that this day of litigation and stuff, we might want to know at what point can civilians direct traffic, because, not to get into it, but Chapter 90, Section 2 doesn't allow anyone to separate or assault police officers, direct traffic. And again, I don't want to hold this up. I want to approve it, but our job is before is to protect the taxpayers' dollar and also their liabilities. So, and also to support the community in these efforts. So I want to do that. I don't want anyone to think I don't want to do that. I just want to be smart about it. And thankfully, we have a person here now in the, with the board can start writing policies to, so we're all on the same page. Does that make sense?
Makes perfect sense.
All right, so I would entertain, I'm sorry to give you a long...
Do we need to approve, or is it just more of a...
Blessing. There is no policy that requires your approval.
Yeah.
But given the fact that it's, it's going to be using the town's resources, it seemed appropriate to have it before you.
Of course, they had acknowledged it, yeah.
But to Mr. Clark's point, I mean, I have a policy that I could bring to your attention from another community where I worked, that, that lists, there's an application, so you know who they are, if they have, you know, nonprofits standing truly. There's a sign-off, not unlike a building permit process where you have various departments that sign off. So you have, you know, the police department, so you're not just relying on getting an email from the chief, but you have a standard that's followed. So I'd be happy to bring that as a part of the policy reviews.
And I like the idea of the referral, because to make sure the highway department isn't planning on doing any work on Proctor Road on that day, you know?
And then the last thing, not to interrupt again, is following that there is, and part of this reason is there's a checklist, but public safety on roads comes under the chief's thing. So that he would make sure that, because he's the one who's going to plan for, God forbid, the worst-case scenario. He, in his training, which we all, most of us don't have, he'll make sure that there's EMS guarantee, how to get someone in and out of there. And I just want it to run smooth. So this is not a roadblock. I want to support our community groups. I do all the time. I just want to be smart about it and protect it. So for this time, let's do it, and we'll make sure it's nice and clean for the future, for the people, all right? So I'm sorry, but...
No, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's something that's...
It's standing in other towns, I'll tell you that. It's standing in other towns. So I guess, Cindy?
I'll make a motion that we approve the North Middlesex Regional High School Chair Booster President Terry Frichette's Request to Hold a 5K Color Run on June 11th, 2016 on the route that...
And that this will be a one-time decision. How do we want to word that?
I think...
It's in the minutes? Second.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the conversation about...
Got it. Thank you. I don't want to be painful. I just want to get it right. Thank you. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for your patience.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Gordon, because it is something that needs to be looked at, so it's consistent.
We'll get there.
I'll just reject it again.
Yeah, we will. Okay. Okay, 4.4, Proclaim the Week of April 10th through the 16th, National Telecommunicators Week and acknowledge our communications department.
Okay. Proclamation, Whereas thousands of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of the United States and Canada, excuse me, by answering their telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas, the critical functions performed by these professional telecommunications, including those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety and maintenance activity, and many other operations performed by federal, state, and local government agencies. And whereas, professional telecommunications work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems through their dedication and participation in training programs. And whereas, the Associated Public Safety Communications Officers Incorporated has set aside the third week in April to recognize telecommunications and their crucial role in the protection of life and property. And now therefore, we, Carolyn Smart, Gordon Clark, and Cindy King, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Townsend, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th to 16 to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. In the town of Townsend, Massachusetts, in honor and recognition of our municipalities, telecommunications, and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens, dated this 19th day of April in the year 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jody, for taking care of that. Try not to put two on one agenda for you in the future.
I don't mind.
Two proclamations on one agenda, it's tough.
That's good. I mean, I like to, the proclamations are nice, because it means there's somebody paying attention to all these. There's a week, there's a month, there's...
We actually have a list.
There's things going on all the time.
Yeah.
And it's important to recognize them.
I agree.
I agree. So 4.5. 4.5, Review and Approve Chapter 90 Project Request for Drainage Work on Gilchrist Road in the Amount of $8,000. So on the project request, it's for material for drainage work...
This has already been done?
On Gilchrist Road. No, this is a request.
Okay.
From the Lunenburg Town Line to the intersection with South Row Road. So, yeah, you got it, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on it?
No, Madam Chairman.
I'm happy that work is being done. I'll make a motion that we approve the Chapter 90 project request for drainage work on Gilchrist Road in the amount of $8,000 for material for drainage work on Gilchrist, to the, Gilchrist Road from the Townsend, the Lunenburg Town Line to the intersection with South Row Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I feel badly, I forgot to bring the Chapter 90 notification we got from the state. Do you recall how much we were getting? It went up.
It was at 430.
Yeah, if you want to announce it, it might be a good idea. Just kind of reminded me. We can go on to 4.6 while he's, he's getting...
Madam Chairman, if I could just do one thing? So I just thought of it here. I should have told the Day of Day Operations, Mr. Crowley, about this. As many people, our citizens out there are noticing now, the six to eight weeks of picking up sand is no longer necessary, but they have maybe saw the sweeper out there still. And that will only happen once every two years, because the state, DEP, I believe, still makes them go around with a sweeper to look for any residue. But so the reason if you see a sweeper is that they're only going to be out there a couple of days, not six to whatever week.
Six to eight weeks, yeah.
So the, the sand, as everyone can notice, streets are a lot safer, and we're saving money with that. So to the highway staff up there, they're doing a great job with it, so.
I often wonder if it helps with some of the motorcycle...
I was just going to say, I have two things to say now. I'm glad you brought that up, because I know at my house, I've noticed over the years, I mean, the highway's always been out there picking up the sand, but there has been, because we use sand, or have been using sand, there's that buildup on the side of the road, which I'm always, in front of my house, scraping it out and using it to fill, because I have a dirt driveway, so I'm always using it.
Right.
But this year, the new sander went through, and I now have like a curbing. Because they, what they did is they brought it in closer, which I think was their plan, which they needed to do to pick up some of the stuff that's been building over the years. So I have this gap of about this much from the street that years ago was actually, my, front of my house was below grade.
Wow.
Now, I've got this much, that they cleared, cleared the street all the way back, which I'm sure they've done that all over town.
Right.
That, that's a benefit. It's kind of weird. We, as homeowners, we probably have to look at that, and what am I going to do? But they've, it's good, because they've really graded, so we can, we know what we're dealing with. And will help any roads that they're going to be repaving.
And I think, as a lot of times, we hopefully will do more of this as we implement new programs in town here to one, give more bang for the dollar, but also be more efficient. I think the Saul program, and thanks to the highways and to everyone else working together, is that it's a win-win. Mr. Kuker has said that we were looking a couple of years, that that's going to be hazardous waste. It'd be 30, 50 grand a year that we would have to play with numbers. So again, you know, education, a lot of times, people see stuff, and we don't do a better job communicating them. They'll say, "Well, why is the sweeper out there?" Well, the state mandates it every two years. They go out. But he says, "Let me tell you something. Those brushes will last 10 years now, instead of being, coming and asking for new brushes every year." And so, you know, so when we have successes, and it's nice to have, and when we don't, we'll work together to get them done. But this is a success story, so I want to praise.
As Carolyn mentioned, motorcycles, as a motorcyclist, it's, the sand that's in the roads, or has been in the roads, is one of the biggest hazards that we have, especially in the spring, in the early time, this time of year when everybody hasn't picked up their sand, and you have private parking lots, and there's a lot of sand out there. And when a motorcycle pulls up to an intersection, or tries to take off in an intersection, that's when we lose control. And, because of sand. It's not anyone doing anything wrong. It's the sand that's there. So not having had sand out there to start with is good, plus picking it up as early as possible is great. Now, if we could just get the private parking lots to do this.
That's exactly why I don't get on the back of my husband's motorcycle.
I didn't mean to get off the track here, but I just thought...
That's important. That's important stuff.
It's important to communicate with the public. We're all trying to do that, the three of us. I agree. I really believe we are. So back to Mr. Crowley now, that's our...
Madam Chairman, the allocation from the state for Chapter 90 roadway funding this year for the town of Townsend is $423,919.
And then, as, as my board knows, we put an article on for...
Additional 100.
An additional 100. So hopefully, we'll be able to make some headway on some of the tough spots and, you know, invest back in our infrastructure.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you for that. So now we'll go on to 4.6, Review Common Planning Board Mandatory Referral Regarding Zoning Change for Special Permit to Construct an Accessory Department, Apartment. Yes. Did you have that?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have no comments.
I didn't have any issue with it. Leave it up to the Planning Board to, the zoning board to.
So I'm, I'm fine with making no, no comment?
Do we need to make a motion to say no comment?
Just let Jim know we have no comment.
It's fine. The minutes will reflect.
I mean, if, it's not, it's not anything public, it's for private property, just to add an in-law apartment, accessory apartment.
I think that's, I mean, that's probably a house that he was planning on it for a long time.
Okay. So with that, my board, until Thursday, I would accept a motion to adjourn. A motion for adjournment.
Second at 6:59. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1787.98]